Do you guys want to play a game?
Well, it's now six thirty-two. We're a couple of minutes late. I'd like to make a note that an executive session was held on Tuesday, April the ninth, at five-thirty in the mayor's office and City Hall to discuss personnel matters. At this time, would you please call the roll?
Counselperson Costner?
Here.
Councilman Nestor?
Present.
Counselperson Thomas?
Here.
Counselor Norchikowski?
Here.
Mayor motion. Mayor Fly present. We noted four.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Brown to come up and lead us in prayer.
Thank you very much for the... Thank you very much, giving honor to all whom honors do and to all that are here in the City Hall today because this is the place that is very valuable to each and every one of us, and we want to make sure that things are in order and that we can maintain the things that we need to maintain. Let us bow our heads and look to the Lord. Most holy and almighty God, Father, we come to you today right now. We come with thanksgiving and we come with praise, and we come with, Father, we thank you for the opportunity and the privilege to be here one more time, oh God. And as we come here today, we ask that you will, Father, set us all our credentials and our circumstances and our situations in order. Here, you've heard each voice and each thing that we have thought about and what we've said. You know, Father, where our minds are and where our connections are. And, Lord, we ask even now that you bring a unity into this community. Bring us together, one mind, one solution and one body, that we may work together and make this, continue to make this place what it has always been for over the years. And we give you the praise and we give you the glory. We say, "Thank you." We're looking for miracles. We're looking for great things. We're looking for you to open doors and make ways out of no way, oh God, because you are God. And we give you the praise and we give you the glory, and we thank you in the name of your dear Son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The amendments will be approved at our next meeting. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment directed to myself from agenda items only.
Ernest Telegraphus. I'm very concerned about who's working and who ain't working here in the city. Now, explain to me, Mayor, why are you giving some sort of a contingent offer to Linda Matthews? At this point in time, is she a employee?
She will become one. We will make her an offer based upon the council tonight.
Yeah, but she didn't make no statement that she was going to go and accept this offer.
She indicated that she will if she's given the offer.
And what kind of offer are you going to present her? A lot more than the other people who are working hard?
The same rate.
What, fourteen dollars? No.
No, I believe it's an annual salary of fifty-eight thousand.
Fifty-eight thousand?
Forty-eight thousand, I'm sorry.
Even forty-eight, that's a little bit more than these other people working here.
That's what the city clerk has been paying.
With no experience, we're going to put her on board and see if she gets top.
That's not top, but that's going to...
It's top reminiscent. And then, what is going on here with all these motions you're trying to approve here with all these sewer systems and... Like you have it broken down to like five different parcels here. Why?
Specific, give me some specifics.
I don't understand why you got everything broken down.
Give me a specific.
Well, on page two and three.
Okay. Two is requisition seventeen for sewer, for phase three of our sewer project. What's the other one?
Well, six hundred and ten thousand dollars. What's that? Then you got it broken down to three work performance. And then further down, you got another one for four hundred and sixty-four thousand. So what are we talking about? One point two million dollars?
Coming up on it, yes.
And this is going to be consumed when? This month, next month?
This is for work already performed.
And where's this money coming from?
The USDA loan and the Penn Vest loan.
And you have this in the account now?
Yes. Well, we, this is a process, and it's been explained many times before. We approve it, it goes to a set of engineers at USDA. The USDA approves it, then it goes to the bank for the interim loan, then it comes back to us, and then we have the money.
Okay, and before you get that money, you're not fucking out anything?
That's the process that takes place.
Okay, so these people are going to wait until all these...
That's the process that takes place.
Okay. After the meeting.
Thank you. Anybody else with comments on agenda items? Any may have any correspondence they'd like to present?
No, Mayor.
Is there a report of our solicitor?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Good evening, everybody. First, there was a transfer to the RDA for the redevelopment authority for Seven-Eleven Delaware Avenue. That deed is drafted. There's also a correction on tonight's agenda with the correct parcel number, just to correct the city's records. Two other properties came up, a property on Elm Street, a property on four twenty-five, located at four twenty-five Motherall. This was from last meeting. Took a look at the recorded documents. I don't know what was printed in the paper, but they were transferred to the redevelopment authority and recorded both on April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. The consideration was one dollar. The property on Motherall was actually transferred by the RDA to a private individual, likely as part to be a side yard.
I guess you're referring to me because I asked that question.
It was a question that was discussed. I'm not...
It was in the paper. Did they correct it?
I don't know which paper that was, but...
I told you before I went to meet here.
I don't care if the paper was wrong or not. It's, I'm telling you that the city transferred it to the redevelopment authority for a dollar. Well...
Paper's wrong.
There could be a mistake. Finally, I took a look at the contract between the city and grew contracting for the ADA ramp at the civic center. The contractor also submitted his insurance. Once he's issued notice to proceed, it needs to be completed by May twenty-second. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Just now, I'd like to ask our city treasurer if he has a report he'd like to give us.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor, council, and citizens of Minnesota. This is my report for the month ending March. Okay, garbage fees revenue. Current for the month of March, we received eighteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-six cents. Year-to-date, three hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-eight cents. Budget amount, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Garbage fees delinquent. March, we received five thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents. Year-to-date, twenty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents. Budget amount, seventy-five thousand. Amount collected by Portoff in March, one thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents. Year-to-date, ten thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty cents. That was including in the amount I wrote before for twenty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Penalty and interest from Portoff, year-to-date, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-two cents. Budget amount, two thousand, five hundred dollars. Garbage fees collected for twenty twenty-five. We received nothing in March. Year-to-date, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Budget amount, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Total for March, twenty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. Year-to-date, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty cents. Budget amount, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. City real estate taxes revenue. Current, March, we received one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. Year-to-date, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. Budget amount, one million, six hundred thousand. Prior city taxes collected by the city, we received nothing in March. Year-to-date, twenty-two thousand, forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Budget amount, seven thousand dollars. Totally, year-to-date taxes, city real estate taxes collected, two hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and three cents. Delinquency taxes collected by Westmoreland County. In March, we received forty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy cents. Year-to-date, forty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy cents. Budget amount, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Tax claim, we are corollary, we received nothing year-to-date. Total, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. Budget amount, one million, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Distribution is as follows. As of March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, year-to-date. General fund, we received one hundred and forty-six thousand, eighty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. Budget amount, one million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. Dip service, year-to-date, thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. Budget amount, three hundred and two thousand and eighty dollars. Library, year-to-date, four thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Budget amount, thirty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. Parks, twenty thousand, eleven dollars and eighty-five cents. Budget amount, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Total, year-to-date, for the distribution was two hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and three cents. Budget amount was one million, six hundred thousand dollars. Real estate transfer tax. March, we received one thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. Year-to-date, eleven thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and forty-eight cents. Budget amount, eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Earned income tax. March, we received eighty-one thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and nineteen cents. Year-to-date, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-five cents. Budget amount, six hundred and eighty-two thousand, forty-eight dollars. Mercantile tax. March, we received six hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty cents. Year-to-date, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. Budget amount, twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Local service tax. March, we received thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-five cents. Year-to-date, seventeen thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. Budget amount, seventy-one thousand, seventy-two dollars. Tax certification letters. March, we received two thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Year-to-date, four thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Budget amount, twenty thousand dollars. Municipal lien letters. March, we received one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Year-to-date, three thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Budget amount, seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. Line usage account. Unsecured payments. In March, we received four thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Year-to-date, seven thousand, two hundred and three dollars. Line usage fee. March, we received sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. Year-to-date, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-three cents. Total, year-to-date, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-three cents. Mayor, that concludes my report. I need a motion.
Mayor, motion to approve the treasurer's report for garbage fees and city real estate taxes collected for the month of March.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Counselperson Costner?
Yes.
Counselman Nestor?
Aye.
Counselperson Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Norchikowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to ask our city controller for her report.
No report right now, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we have a special presentation that's going to be made by WEC. The purpose of presenting Phase Four Amendment Two, which requests one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars increase in engineering, bringing the engineering cost to a total of thirty-one percent of the project cost. This time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Vitale.
The contractor, Brian Reynolds is here, and Bob Menzieski as well. This is about Phase Four. The project was designed and costs were agreed to during the pandemic. Project involved raising the forty-foot-deep, forty-eight-inch terracotta pipe that runs beneath Shawnee Park, replacement of several hundred feet of Delaware combination sewage, replacement of several hundred feet of Reed pipe, replacement of pipe from McKee to Ninth, oh, and the big one, Ninth Street relocation from Alask Alley to Schoonmaker. We got three bids. This was our best day on this job. The first bid was one million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, which yielded a two hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred dollar contingency. The next bid was almost to the dollar, a million dollars more. The third bid was double, two point eight seven six, which would have yielded a four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar contingent fee. Reynolds Brothers was the lowest responsible bidder. We had some serious concerns with their bid due to rapid material cost increases and availability at that time. Penn Vest reduced the contingency from twenty to ten percent at closing. The contingency is an amount of money placed in reserve for unknown issues that regularly arise with projects of this nature. After a conversation with Penn Vest, we were able to get the contingency back to fifteen percent with an oral commitment to increase the contingency, if necessary, at the conclusion of the project. The entire project presented problems from solid rock to landfill waste. Something as benign as Reed turned into a nightmare because the original pipe was laid on a bed of rock with two-foot terracotta segments that were anything but straight. This required the removal of the rock, which turned out to be a thin layer. Under it were multiple large boulders. The net result of this is the shape of the ditch restoration and the time of materials required to complete this project under the rules of the Penn Vest. Inspector slash construction manager's role is to coordinate with the contractor, which includes communications such as emails and phone calls. The inspector must also verify compliance with the plans and specifications and also calculate quantities for invoicing. These are daily duties that require considerable additional time. There's a great deal of work that is done on-site to satisfy DEP projects' requirements, some of which are summarized above. The contractor had difficulties getting materials to satisfy approved plans such as pipe manholes and fittings. For example, the junction box at the top of Shawnee had to be handmade on-site due to excessive backlog to the pandemic. We used a construction inspection software package called Fulcrum to gather information. Fulcrum information is reviewed and memorialized slash duplicated on our servers to allow us to eventually get away from the Fulcrum subscription and maintain the information. Our work on the project was not limited to design specifications, bidding and inspection, which constitute an eighteen percent fee. Over and above these duties, we prepared the HOP permit for Delaware, two H and H hydraulic and hydrologic reports. These reports are to provide information necessary to calculate pipe size. They're required by DEP to do these for Ninth Street and Shawnee because we had to convert a sixty-four-inch elliptical pipe to a pipe size available in today's market. An H and H report is an engineered study modeling rainfall runoff and flow rates. These reports require contour modeling to accommodate a storm, and in our case, the storm we accommodated was for twenty-five years. We also had to prepare a water quality permit because the work zone was larger than one acre. The project was financed through Penn Vest with DEP scrutiny. The contractor required additional time to complete the project due to extreme conditions. He had three to nine people on-site depending on a day's task, such as a concrete sub, paving sub, a trucking sub, most days to wrap this up. It took weeks to get from the corner of Ninth Street through the park to Knox. Like six weeks. There was twenty feet of solid rock. We were on-site to memorialize the contractor's activities as required. We were within the required contingency of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars until the contractor provided us with his final quantities at the end of March and continuing today. The project is satisfactory complete, and as it was his right to stop work due to excessive conditions, he did not. Most other contractors would have stopped work and requested a change order for the excessive conditions.
You guys have anything you want to add?
This is Brian. Does anybody have questions about it? Our finals are just reflected in the quantities that it ended up being. I redid the paperwork, which the numbers will show that the, we were one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars over, roughly. The change order would technically be a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, but then there's a twenty-four thousand dollar credit due to the quantities that we did not reach because there was some pipe that wasn't used, there was a section we cut out. So all in all, it ended up being one hundred and fifty-eight on our end over, which was, for what we actually encountered, I think that was more than fair.
Okay. Was that physical, was that, is that physical costs? In other words, I could touch it, it's tangible?
Yeah, it's whatever, so the cubic yardage, everything has a line item for you guys. So quantities were based off his reports and measurements, and it's just bid off of that. It was not bid off of, hey, that took a week, hey, that took a thousand dollars in pipe, that took, it was just pure quantities.
I'm still asking, I want to know, is it tangible? I could touch what was purchased by the...
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, yes.
That's what I wanted to know.
Stone, asphalt, concrete, curbs.
You have any more to add?
Well, just some of the things that Tony mentioned as far as the water quality permit and... One thing he didn't mention was getting the easements and looking at, going through the railroad property and survey. And all these things were expressly excluded in the original agreement and line items. So that's what the first amendment, first amendment was for.
Right.
We took it up to the five hundred and eighty. The other thing is that our agreement was based on the number of days that was estimated to complete the job, and that was pre-COVID and before all the delivery issues came about. So that's clearly a change in the scope of the construction responsibilities and part of the contract or our agreement with you is, you know, we're entitled to a compensation for that.
Okay. Let me kind of summarize here a little bit from...
What I need to get my head around, wrap my head around, and I've been having a problem with it no matter where it goes. All right. The contract is bid out, the job's bid out. I'm sorry. Is that okay? All right. Thank you. So my question is, what I'm trying to grasp, grab, put my head around is the process that the job's bid at a certain, at a price. Now, things do come up. We all know that. It's just, that's just the way the world is. It's not perfect. But something comes up, a different contingency comes up. The contractor says, "Hey, timeout. I'm hitting something or something, there's a problem. I can't continue because I'm going to be required to do such and such a thing that may require such and such a price increase." Am I so far okay?
Yes, but in this case, no. I can explain why, but I know what you're going.
Okay. So, and I'm not picking on you, I'm just using it as a generic...
Yeah, no.
As the contractor, you would go back to the engineer, which is WEC, and say, "Hey, there's a change in material cost or some other cost or labor cost, whatever the cost is, but cost, there's going to be a change in what the original was, bid at price." Am I right so far?
No, because I can explain. Do you want me to explain now or after?
Go ahead.
So let me think this.
So from us hitting rock, most of our contracts, yeah, I'd have been able to charge for the rock, have a hammer and all that. With this project, it was exempt. So the only increase what you got was if he estimated Ninth Street to be a thousand cubic yards of material, even though we hit rock, now the ditches are wider, it turned out to be fifteen hundred cubic yards of material. So the increase was just for the five hundred cubic yards of material that was the unit price.
That's physical.
That is physical, yes. There was no, hey, the labor went up, I had to charge more. I did not do that. There was no extra cost in pipe increase? No, that is not in there.
Okay, that I understand perfectly, and that's perfectly justifiable. But my question is, and I could be wrong, and I'm the only person here thinking this way, there's a disconnect that something else needed to be done for you to continue on, correct?
It was right at the last street.
I mean, you still had the big rock, it was going to cost more to fill it back in when you took it out.
Yeah.
The ditch would be pretty stable with the rock. And you started hitting the large boulders that were deep. See, what happened was they laid the pipe, Reed's on a slope. And they laid the pipe on a rock bed. They were just going cattywampus with this terracotta, the original. No one in their right mind would do that. You're laying twelve-foot sticks of PVC, so you need to be, you got to go from here to here, it's a direct shot. So you had to remove the rock, and then below the rock were clay, it was clay, and then large boulders. And when you remove the boulders to set your alignment and you backfill the stone, when you's getting in those pictures where you see the brick overhanging, that created a bigger pool. And I gave you guys the Fulcrum report, you can go in there and pull all the pictures you want off there, you can see what's going on.
What, but what I'm, let me finish, what I'm getting to is, if I'm trying to understand this right, and this maybe has nothing to do with you, I'm not sure, so I'm just going to throw it out there. The additional cost, okay, that required a change order, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. Our engineering firm manages that, is the best word I could think of, is managing that. Where was the communication that said from point A to point B to point C, "Hey, excuse me, this is going to, we ran into a situation here, no fault of our own, and we didn't perceive it, but it's going to cost such and such extra amount because we have to move forward and do this, 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 and this." That's where I want to drive to right now. Where was that communication to council to approve? Yeah, okay, we're going, it's going to cost us a lot more money, we need to know that. Oh, okay, we can approve it. That's where I'm thinking the disconnect is at. There was nothing. That's where I'm getting to. There, to my knowledge, council was not let into any of that information, am I correct?
Yeah, let me try to say this a little bit different, if you don't mind. If you look at the agreement that was put together long before I was in office, number one dot four says, "The engineer agrees to provide onsite construction, observation, and contract administration, which will include the preparation and execution of change orders as the same may be required." That tells me that you keep a track of things. If you look at the Fulcrum reports, I'm impressed. Now, I didn't get the Fulcrum reports for Phase Four until, all of the reports until just early last week. There's a couple of things that I noticed in the Fulcrum reports that kind of concerned me. First off, every day that you were there, it was pretty clear that somebody was there. You got pictures, you got a description of the activity that took place, that's all very clear. But in the same set of notes is something that says, "Two loads of this gravel were used," or "Four loads of this was used." You were documenting how much material was being used every day as it was being consumed, but never was there ever any indication that you were compiling this information in a report that could be presented to council that said that we've reached the limit and a change order needs to be done.
Well, you could get that information up a month before the project is reserved.
But you were documenting this in the inspection reports every day.
We go on with the inspector and the contractor, agree to the final quantities, you know, they present for us.
So the purpose of...
We don't keep a running track.
I agree you didn't keep a running track, but that's my question is, why didn't you? You had that information in real time.
We never, we never had done that anywhere.
Well, that's what's in the Fulcrum reports that you provided to me, was that real-time information that was collected at that time.
We don't keep a running tally every day of how much was added and then wanted.
Well, what I'm saying is, that would have been really handy because we didn't know. Now, the fact that you...
We're trying to figure something after the fact. Well, it's not the project for something after the fact.
Well, but, but that's project management.
We're going to do that.
That's project management. Now, let me back up just a second here. I don't disagree with change, the change order one, because that is pretty typical of a contract that's done with estimated quantities like what you guys did. You estimated you're going to use so much of this, and you ended up using so much of that. Uh, that's pretty much common, and I see that that is happening even on the phase three that we're doing with USDA. That's likely to happen there. But what concerns me is you have a resident project inspector on premise that we're paying money for that documented the use of this stuff and wasn't reporting it back to us. Now, that really comes to play when you look at number three point three. It is expressly understood and agreed that in, that in no event will the total compensation of reimbursement, if any, to be paid here and under, ever exceed the maximum amount indicated in column three of the fee schedule for this project unless the scope of design or construction observation has increased. That indicates that the construction management observation is a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So in one place you say that you, you will, you'll manage the project, you use Falkrum to, to document all of this, but you're not going to make any changes in the, in the price of, of observation without doing a change order, and yet at the end of the project, forget all the, the, the material costs, because I agree with that. That, that happens. But in the project, you come back and say, there is another hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars or plus or minus, I forget the exact number, that you need for additional project management.
We couldn't even estimate that because we didn't know what they were going to continue to encounter as they were doing, trying to go through the rock and the pour of soil.
The, uh, the point being is, all you have to do is come talk to us and say, hey, you waited almost a year before you gave us this last change order. You waited almost a year before you told us that there's going to be additional charges.
We didn't close out the contract yet. That's what we're working towards. I mean, he gave us, he gave us the information.
All along the way, if you'd been providing monthly reports and monthly totals, we didn't know where we're going. The, the bottom line is, right now, we're at seven hundred and nine thousand dollars for engineering fees on a two-point-three million dollar project.
Didn't they save you four million on something else?
No, he did not.
You set it yourself.
He's, we say set four million dollars on the project. That's not that they saved it. That's what the quotes were that they got on the project.
Sounds like you're digging a funny hole.
No, I'm sorry. We can talk about that. That's a different subject. Right here, we have a contract, and you ought to recognize this contract. There's, there's some names on here that you ought to understand real well. This contract was done with, uh, under the, the auspice of John Harhigh. I think you know who that is. It was signed by Matt Sharrock. That is the contract that we are forced to live with.
They haven't supplied that normally. I know that as a fact, but that's okay. Keep digging because you got, there's some beef you got hidden under something.
What I'm saying is seven hundred and nine thousand dollars on a two-point-three million dollar project for engineering is excessive.
I explained to you why those numbers are, I explained to you why those numbers are that the way they are.
I understand. I'm just saying that that's excessive.
I gave you the Falkrum report. Now, keep in mind...
Not until after, after you gave us the bill.
Until you asked for it. You asked for it, you got it.
Okay.
But here's the thing. John went on vacation, uh, probably two weeks every year, two to three weeks a year. So say six of those weeks I was there, and as you know, I don't do Falkrum. He wasn't there, but his people know I was there to watch him hammer through Ninth Street Park. Okay? We, there were days when they didn't get, when...
I'm not doubting any of that. It was a tough project. I'm, I'm not doubting that you spent this time. What I'm, the only thing I'm having question about is the way that it was reported to council, that we have said...
We were under the belief that we were under the contingent fee until we got his final qualities. He had to borrow.
So even contingency fees were in excess of what you had told us in the contract that you were going to charge us.
Dan McKissick said that the final invoice is usually the one that takes into consideration the change order. He deals with hundreds of projects a year.
In the end, let me just be very frank with you. In the end, I will advocate that we, we do your amendment number two and pay you the additional money, which takes us out your, your earnings up to seven hundred and nine thousand dollars. When we do that, assuming that the rest of council agrees with me, and I'm not saying that they will or won't, assuming that we do that, we're going to be twenty-five thousand dollars over what the Penn Vest loan is for. That's twenty-five thousand dollars that we have to make up from some other source. Now...
That happens to contractors all the time.
Maybe, but...
We dealt with dirt all the time, and when they get rock, they get rock. There's a divisional cost to it.
I'm not complaining about the, the co, change order one that they...
Whoa, 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 whoa. There's no, there's no...
They have talked.
You want out of here? I'll be asking the chief. Chief?
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, but I...
If you're trying, if you're trying to, if you're trying to build a cave...
I'm not trying to build a...
Just come out of the safety room.
We don't want W E engineers a fender for fifty years.
Mayor, we're going to need order. Mayor, we're going to, we're going to need order here in the, the meeting, mayor, please. We're going to need order.
Let's, uh, let's keep it down. No more outbursts from the things. This is our...
We understand. Go ahead.
Hey, be quiet. Be quiet.
So don't mumble.
Be quiet.
This will be the first...
Don't mumble.
Chief, I've asked him four times to be quiet. Can you, uh, help me out with this? Four times I ask you. Here you go again. You can either be quiet, be quiet, and let me finish what I'm saying. No, you may not.
Why?
Because it's...
This isn't open for comment right now.
This isn't open for comment.
Which is doing injustice, not only to the, to the contractor...
Pino.
Pino, you haven't let me finish what I'm saying.
This isn't open for discussion right now. Later it can be.
He's trying, he's trying to drive a wedge to try to get rid of this group here.
No, I have a question, and I wanted, the question's going to be is what he was going to say.
Just pay the damn bill because they ain't cheat you out. It's something you're...
We're twenty-five thousand, we're going to be twenty-five thousand dollars over what the project is funded for. Okay? Where are we supposed to get it from? I'm sorry. So we just, we just have, line usage isn't, isn't just a fund that we can just take stuff from.
We do. We do.
We do for projects.
We don't for anything else except for streets. And this was a project.
Sewer project.
But this is a project. This is no different than when you do a bill...
Because it's on Westgate side of town. There's a big commercial.
No, not at all.
No. I don't care where this project was. It's twenty-five thousand dollars over budget.
Okay, but when you run into rock, most contractors that I've been dealt with have a rock clause on it because...
Pino, would you please quit, quit, quit arguing with us? Pino, 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 Pino.
Again, we still have to come up with twenty-five thousand dollars that we didn't budget and don't have. Can we understand that? It's money we don't have.
We passed out two hundred thousand dollars because we needed a plot here.
The, uh, the, the point of this is that, the point of this is, what I'm questioning is the project management part of this, that they did not keep us informed. They had the tools to do this. They did not keep us informed as to what was going on until after they're trying to close out the project. And you can say, well, they were waiting to close out the project. They had contingency fund, but if they're already in the contingency fund, they've already recognized that they're spending more than what they, they thought they would be doing. The contingency fund is just that for contingencies.
Brian, how many times am I asking for more?
So...
The, the, the change order one that you want, that's not an issue. We're paying that, absolutely. We will pay you, Vitale, but it's going to be at our next meeting. It's not going to be at this meeting. And I will tell you that the reason why is because I think you are not managing the projects appropriately.
So that is so incorrect.
I've been involved in, I've run projects bigger than this.
Pino.
Pino.
Please, stop. Just stop it.
I don't need, my dad died a long time ago.
Hey.
Pino, I'm going to ask you the last time. I'm going to ask you one last, at Pino, please stop. That's it. I'm telling you, that's it.
My dad died. You ain't my dad, dude.
Would you like to leave?
Let me tell you, when I...
Would you like to leave? Chief?
Why do you stay at down the meeting like you normally do?
Because it's too early to meet.
This is not that, that, we need to have order and decorum in this meeting. We need to make sure that you guys understand. Now, if you guys disagree with what we're doing, that's fine. At the end of the meeting, we'll have public comment, and you're welcome to talk about that.
So my question is, is I'd be curious to know what happened. You're doing the job, and it's towards the end of the job, and you run into a major problem that wasn't expected. You're going to go back to the engineers and say, hey, so A, B, and C, wow, we didn't expect this. There's a huge sinkhole. There's some, whatever weird it is, and it's going to cost a lot of money. It's going to cost a lot more than we ever anticipated. You would go to engineers, W C, and say, look, this is what I project it's going to cost additional because this is what I ran into, right? Now, what I'm expecting is, or at least I'm thinking, is W C comes back to council and says, oh, contractor ran into something. This is what's going on. It's going to exceed whatever we thought we were anywhere close to, plus our contingencies. What do you want to do? That's where I'm having the hangup. That never happened.
So, so a lot of that.
This was a lost sand. Trickle, 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 trickle.
Trickle, trickle, trickle ends up to be a mound of, of moldy old...
I can't tell you how big Big is until he gives me his corner.
So, so with that, to come back...
You understand where I'm coming from.
Yes, and to come back to give you a lump sum. So say if we knew we hit bad material on Ninth, and I would come in and say, hey, this is going to cost X amount. We had our days where you're on Ninth, and you just lost all hope. Then all of a sudden, you're in great ground for fifty feet. So it's like, finally, we're out of it. Then all of a sudden, you're in a landfill, and then you're pulling up railroad ties. A lot of these quantities that are, are over did not happen until the last two months that we worked, which would have been November, December. And that's because that's when all the final paving and the concrete curbs and the sidewalks took place. So in their defense, for that part, because that's where the, the quantities really didn't happen until like the last month, maybe the last two months. So it wasn't like we knew ahead of time. And there was some stuff that we eliminated to try to minimize the quantities, but...
I totally understand that. But when, when you hit that threshold, and it was going to require a lot more quantities, you, of course, informed everybody.
Well, we were almost done. Like, we were going up Reed.
Right, but you still had to inform it was going to cost more.
We don't really know the quantities until the end of the month. That, so you, how you're saying how they keep track in Falkrum, I know that when I have to invoice, I wait for, I think you have a guy named Adam. He would email me, here's the total quantities for the month, and he would figure it out. So the day-to-day, they didn't have that. At the end of the month, we knew. But then if we were done, say in November, you were at your quantities, then were you not going to pave? Were you not going to concrete? Were you not going to? And I do believe if you read your specs, I want to say there's a line in there that says if the change order's within ten percent, it's not a big issue. I could find that again when I'm at my computer, but, I mean, that's really not my department. I'm just saying that they wouldn't have known mid-project, because they're worried. You'd have days it was great, then there'd be weeks it was bad, and all of a sudden, you're great again. And that's, that's why I could not come to you and say, hey, we hit bad ditch. It's going to be three hundred thousand to finish this road. It was really, with your conditions, it was no way to tell. Because then we would hit delays with the water lines. All of them were leaking, and the ditch is pure water. Then the water company would come up, can you wait a week because we want to repair this, and then you can continue? Then you'd go so far, then you'd have a gas line. Uh, can you wait a week or so? We want to replace forty feet. So then we'd have to wait for them. And by them digging, you had cave-ins. So it's kind of hard to predict.
Just kept multiplying.
Yes, and it was, for what, what we ran into, even though I know you went over, I, you got really lucky.
Well, and again, I'm not complaining about what you did at all. I think you did an outstanding job.
Thank you.
I think the problem is really in the way that we were informed by the engineering group about how the project was going. We didn't understand that...
Do you understand now?
I do now, but this is the problem with what you're explaining to me. We should have understood this months ago.
I was telling you guys that it was wrong.
And you should have told me, by the way, we're doing additional project inspection here. My engineering cost is going to be much higher than what it was. It's above the, above and beyond. This has nothing to do with him. The fact that you were there, and I agree, you have to be there, but you should have let us know. To be honest, when it came up to close the project here two weeks ago, I was dumbfounded because I thought the project was done last year, and in fact, it was in December. So here it is in April, and we're just now closing the project out. There is a disconnect in what I consider to be adequate project management. And you can say whatever you want.
Give me one more example other than this crazy job where project management is working. One more. In fifty years, give me one more.
Uh, phase three. It's happening there, too.
What's happening there?
You're... As an example, and this is, um, well, okay, let me back up even before that. Let's go to Ninth Street Park as an example. We were over budget there because we didn't monitor the cost as we were doing the project.
Well, no. You're over there because nobody took into consideration the inspection.
Whose responsibility is that? You're the project engineer.
I don't remember specifics on that project. I know what work, what Ax number was. I don't know what Walt had reserved. No one shared that with me.
There was a budget that you were given upfront, and that's what the budget was. So...
I, I, no, I disagree with you. I wasn't given a budget. Not in advance. And I don't know how you comply budget when the guy was awarded the job in November and completed it the fall of June. I mean, that, that's completely chance. The fact that he held his pricing, it's unheard of.
Well, as I said, we, I will advocate you get paid on the next meeting, but I have serious considerations about, serious concerns about the way that this project did. In the contract, it says that you'll provide us information about change orders, and it also says you will not exceed the amount without doing that. And yet you did both of those things.
Third time I've said it tonight. I've probably put it in writing four or five times. I don't know where we are until he tells me where he is.
But you know where you are at the time. You keep track of your time.
It was within the contingency.
It wasn't...
It was, as Dan said the other day.
It's, it's exceeded that contingency by twenty-five thousand dollars, so...
When his quantities came in. When his quantities were out of tune, it exceeded it.
Yeah, that is, what you're asking for is so...
All I want to be is informed. All I want to be is informed.
You're looking to build a cage to try to get rid of him, and these people have been here for fifty years. They know more by the ax than you do on purpose.
Okay, Lou, I'm not going to argue with you because it's not your floor right now.
Construction business, you just go through the queen. A lot of time, you're in the green.
Okay, let's continue on. Let's continue on. So, as I said, we'll, we'll, we'll iron that one out. We'll take care of it. The next presentation I have, I'd like to ask is R V E to come in and talk to us about what they can offer the city.
Thank you. My name is Mike Meyer with Remington Vernic Engineers. I'm one of our principals in our Western Pennsylvania office. With me is Aaron Henderson. He's passing out a couple of different things for you to look at as we're giving, just a very brief, informative thing. Uh, our company is, was founded in nineteen oh one. Uh, we've been doing, we mainly do municipal work. About seventy percent of our work is municipal. We don't do private development. We handle more, we do some hospital work. We do some state work, PennDOT, uh, different areas like that. Multi-discipline firm, meaning that we can do civil, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, any of the different things, geotechnical, environmental survey, all of that different, uh, items that a municipality needs to have. Uh, we have total of four hundred and fifty employees, uh, in, in the company that handle the middle and South Atlantic region. We have fifteen different offices, four in Pennsylvania, six or seven in New Jersey, North Carolina. Um, as I said, our main thrust is municipal engineering. That, that's really what we do. We successfully obtained millions of dollars worth of grants, uh, for our clients since two thousand and three, and I think Aaron passed out. One of the things that shows just some of the different grants that we've done. Uh, our key thing that we always look at is to represent municipalities in a cost-efficient manner. That's the main part. Uh, whether it be a borough, a city, a township, all have to be done in a cost-efficient manner. And how we do that, one of the things also that's passed out is a not-to-exceed proposal, and Aaron will talk a little bit about that, how we put those in and say, this is our number. And again, I heard you talking about change of scopes. If there's a change of scope, if, for instance, if you say, listen, we need you guys to add this in, we'll come back and make it that amendment. We'll let you know and... We'll let you know, and we'll talk about it and how it's being done. Constructibility reviews are one of the biggest things we do for all our projects, which is one of the main parts of our QAQC, so that when we do, I'm sorry, quality assurance, quality control. I'm just used to doing QAQC. That's one of our biggest things, where we have our inspectors also look at our plans to find out which way where contractors can look at different change orders. We try to minimize change orders. Yes, they can happen. However, with the use of experience, you know, myself, I have thirty-seven years, Aaron a lot younger, probably twenty-five, but that is one of the biggest things that we use, and we use different people who have expertise, whether it be in sanitary, whether it be in water, whether it be in drainage or highway. We have that within our, our stable of people. And the other big thing is, and again, I think we have some of the different grants we send out every month to all of our clients, here are the grant list that's upcoming. Here are the ones that you should be looking for, so that we can then, at that point, go out and try to see if we can get them, and that's one of the advantages we have. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Aaron on how to, how we go with a certain project.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, so, so keys to successful project, project execution, you know, really starts upfront with us having a conversation. What are your objectives? What is your funding? Is there enough money to do it? So, you know, we'll have some conversations about what you wanna do, what the scope of work will be, what our responsibilities will be throughout the project. So, with that, we'll write a proposal, which I believe at the bottom of your stack, you'll see the, the pages that go into writing a proposal that illustrate exactly what our responsibilities will be during that project. And it also outlines what our, what our assumptions are, what's included, what's not included, and it provides a price. So, you know, with, with that well-defined scope of work, it, you know, eliminates a lot of the ambiguity if, you know, if changes come up unforeseen, whatever. It protects us, protects you, it just eliminates that ambiguity. So, another step to successful project execution is dedicated project management. One single point of contact for the city throughout the life of a project. And, you know, that person is focused on the time of the project and, and the budget. And with that, that project manager is backed up by four hundred-plus technical experts and staff with, within our organization. Another, another step is the quality assurance, quality control process. You know, that's, that's been developed over a hundred years of, of RVE's existence. Everybody makes mistakes. Worst thing you could do is make the same mistake twice, so, you know, that, that becomes part of the QAQC. So, those, those mistakes are eliminated, hopefully. And, you know, as Mike mentioned, with the constructibility reviews, it, it just provides a higher quality deliverable for, for us, for yourself, and, and for the contractors. It's, you know, it's all about communication from, from start to finish. So, from that very first conversation that we have, and until the project is done with contractors, it's all about communication. Yeah, final point is just experienced construction management, construction administration, and inspection. So, from, from the office to the field, you'll be covered.
Thank you, Aaron. And I know that all of you have seen the proposal that we had submitted, so you can look at that for any other information, it goes through a lot of our different projects. But, you know, I'd like to kinda end with, with some bullet points about, you know, why Remington Vernick. One, I have a hundred and three years of experience, not me myself, I've looked at, but only, I only have like thirty-seven, so, but there's a lot of them. Single responsible point of contact. Even though we have all these people, electrical, mechanical, structural, all the different people, you won't have to say, oh, yeah, you'll go, go call this guy, you call Aaron, and Aaron will be there. He'll be there, and he'll be able to get all of the different people, all of the experts that you need. Seasoned professional and experienced client representative team. Successfully obtained grants for multiple clients to fund diverse projects. Again, you can look through those and see all of them. Longit, longevity, longevity with different clients. While we haven't, not in, in Pennsylvania, but in New Jersey, we've had one of those, two of those clients for a hundred and three years. One for a hundred and two years, and someday, I'll tell you why it was only a hundred and two years. There was a, an item one time. The other part of it is, the biggest thing is adherence to schedule and budget. That has to be one of the first things that we look at in the beginning, is how do we do that? How do we adhere to the schedule and the budget? And the last thing, and I don't think we can say this enough, is communication. In, in keeping everyone informed, whether it be by monthly status reports, talking, picking up the phone and calling people, talking to them. You know, everyone talks about emails, emails, emails. I get hundreds on my day. What I always tell our people and how I want everyone to treat our clients, conversation, talk to people, tell them, and then follow it up with an email if it's something that they, you want to have responded to. But the first thing is talking, communication, communicate. That's really our biggest thing. So, I know we didn't wanna go too long, so if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I have a question. On your services on your lists...
Mm-hmm, yes.
Shows on the right side, you know, those are grants.
Yes.
Were those grants obtained by the burrows or townships themselves, or were those grants that, that your company executed, went out to get and bought for the borough or townships?
Let's say seventy-five, twenty-five. Some burrows and cities and townships have their own grant writers. We will help them get the grants by providing documentation. For instance, today, I was working on one, and, and it's funny, 'cause you have a River Valley School District, that's one of our proposals, but they are trying to do a new welding room in their thing. They have grant writers, but they needed us to provide the technical, some of the technical information. How long is it gonna take? What type of welding equipment are they going to need? Things like that. So, sometimes we'll do that. Other small burrows have maybe half-time administrator, maybe one clerk, maybe one public works, we'll write them for them. Totally, you know, we'll do that. Really depends, but we'll do it any way the client wants us to do it.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? I appreciate you, you're coming.
Thank you.
No? At the end, you will have comments.
It would be a fair question.
I'm sorry.
You sorry?
I'm sorry.
Sorry you said that.
Yeah, that may be, but you know what? I was elected to be here. When you were elected, you can sit up here.
Not for long.
Another year and a half at a minimum.
And you can go.
Maybe so. But for the next year and a half, I'm here, you're not.
Yeah, but I'll make your life longer.
All right. I'm gonna move on here. There's several things that have been going on today that have me very concerned. First off, today, you, and many people may have heard, there's lots of projects going on, but if you were out last night, you noticed that Third Street was closed. Not a little bit, but closed. That is an extremely important thing because, first off, there was an assault taken up there, there was a fire that, that occurred up there. It was closed around eight o'clock last night, and it didn't open up again until early this morning. There was no street opening permit given. This was our gas company that just simply decided they're gonna do some work on one half of the road, they closed the entire road and left us high and dry without notifying our EMS, our fire department, our, our police, nothing. This is not acceptable by them, and they will be cited. That is just ridiculous. We have a street opening permits for that purpose. That's not the only, only thing that's been going on. I've been working with WEC for some time on two, two issues that were occurring, one on Third Street and one on Twelfth Street, whereby the project tore up a section of Third, of Third Street there next to the French Club, as you go around the blind corner up there. And if you've been seeing, going up that road very often, you notice that road has gra, nothing but gravel over where they were working. If you hit that gravel in a car and hit it wrong, you're gonna damage a wheel. If you hit it on a motorcycle, you could be fatally injured. Now, I won't deny that he's been trying to get them to fix the problem, but that is unacceptable for us to have contractors in the city that leave roads like that. It is not appropriate. That cannot continue on. I sent our streets department up there today with instructions to get it made passable again. I haven't been up there to see what's happened, but I understand that both Third Street and Twelfth Street are now safe to drive on again without having, running a risk of falling in a hole and damaging your car. We've been working with WEC and RVE here to understand all the issues that we've been facing as a city. I think that WEC understands our sewer system better than anybody else could possibly understand it. There's no doubt about that. He, he is the one that wrote the specifications for USDA, he's the one that wrote the specifications for Penn Vest, he's the one that's been managing these projects. It would be asinine to take him off of that project. I have no intention of doing that. He is, he will be named our, our special sewer engineer to take care of those projects. And he will be busy doing those projects for probably the next year and a half, unless I'm badly mistaken. And that's probably optimistic, before you get through with, with all that you have left going on. He will be well compensated, there's no doubt about that. He's got money in there for, for his, his, his engineering and his project management, so that, that's not, I'm not concerned with that. Let's keep on moving on here. So, next thing is, we have Armond Valley Sewer Authority, or, excuse me, let me back up, Armond Valley Refuge Authority, that has asked us how we want to do, what interest does the city have, what special concerns the city have in the next contract this time? Our sewer, our, why I'm getting tongue-twisted, our refuge authority entered into a contract with Noble Environmental two years ago. That contract runs out in December of this year. We have to come up with a new contract. So, they're asking us, what kinds of things do we want to see in this contract? And I'd like to make some suggestions to, to council, and if they wanna discuss them, I'm more than willing to do that. But one of the questions is, what kind of term do we want? I suggest we do a five-year contract because it protects us from price increases for five years, fuel prices, everything else. So, I think that that would give us the best possible thing. If somebody has great heartburn with that, we can talk about it, but that's my suggestion. The next thing was, I would suggest that we sit, we ask them to get best pricing for the residential and best pricing for our commercial users. And I don't, I mean, every single dumpster size. And we take the best price overall for residential and dumpsters, and that's what we use for awarding the contract, not just one or the other. Last year, they did basically the same thing, but they left off one particular sized dumpster, and that was the size dumpster that most people use here. And when they went to get that dumpster, it was priced outrageously high by Noble Environmental, and Biggs was undercutting them, probably to make a point, but Biggs undercut them in big ways, and people were using Biggs. Because it was not part of the contract, I did not feel that we had legal premise to force them to use a particular company when, when the pricing was not included in the contract. So, I wanna make sure we solve that problem. And then, third is, they want a accurate count of all the properties in Maneson that have garbage picked up from. We don't have enough resources to go take a survey of every single property in Maneson, but what we do have is resources that have to do with who gets water, who get, who has a, has sewer connections. If we take those two things, put them together, and give the deference to our code enforcement, then they're looking at a small number of properties, and that's the way that we'll come up with that list. Does anybody have any thing that they'd like to change in that suggestion that I go to the Refuge Authority with? I will take this to them on their next meeting.
I don't, I'm not sure I see the, the problem with getting, putting a three-year in there also.
Okay. You wanna get...
Doesn't cost them anymore.
Okay, we can, we can ask both ways. We can ask for ten years or one year, I don't care. Okay, we can make, we can put a three-year in there. I have no issue with that.
Just for the information for the people to know, we were supposed to meet here tonight if that's what he said he wanted to do.
Right.
To inform council and you guys to see what they wanted, and I told him it was a waste of time, but he was not gonna do that. And he did. The day before, he wrote an email to every one of the people that he knows, and they were wondering what the hell was going on.
Well, the bottom line is, we...
He told them.
Okay, no, I'm not gonna let you finish. Let me answer your question before you go any further.
You lied, that's all you do.
Let, no. First off, it is not legal to have a, a private meeting with city council and the Refuge Authority.
Is that what you told them to do?
That's what was requested, you wanted...
And you said we were not meeting here.
Yeah, and I said, I said, I can't do that. I said, we can't.
He said to your people...
And I, I consulted with our solicitor, and he said, you can't do that.
He said it can't be done, it's a waste of time.
It's not, and I've never said it was a waste of time.
And then he sent email and got everybody pissed off.
The...
Because what he's saying right now on the five-year, on the big dumpster, on the little...
Okay, enough, enough. Stop, stop.
Totally invested.
Stop, stop.
Because you were totally...
Stop.
I'm not gonna, this is a fact.
It was not held that way because that would've been a sunshine violation.
Yeah, you are sunshine.
I, it would be? So, even if they would've came...
I asked them they could come to this meeting, and we could talk to them now.
Right, if they'd have came to this meeting and wanted to make a presentation about that, is that okay?
Then that would've been fine. That would've been okay.
That's a public meeting.
That's a public meeting, but they could not meet in advance, in a private executive session. And that's what I told them.
So, that was the difference then, Pino?
No, it makes no difference, 'cause he chose...
Well, no, it does make a difference, is what I'm saying is, if you were, if the, if they, if all of you would've came and made it, like, happen now, and you addressed it to us in the public, that's okay, but we couldn't meet with you ahead of time that it's not in a public forum. So, my question to you was, which one was it?
If the meeting that said that shouldn't happen, okay? But he went against it. So, you have to read his email, not from this week, from the last week, okay? Because his email started last week, and we were still having a meeting until yesterday, in all hell for a blue. And two of the people that he appointed, which are good people, two of the people that he appointed, they were pissed off because of the hell you do.
They, they wanted to know why they couldn't meet here in private. They did not wanna come to a public meeting, is what they said. That's exactly what they said.
I've been in this country...
Okay, let's come, let's continue on. The last thing that I'd like to talk about, very quickly, no, I'm done, you're done, you're done.
I know, you're done. A year and a half, and you're gone.
In a year and a half, that may be the case. I'm not worried about it.
It will be the case.
We have a small handful of properties that the city owns with structures on them, and this is just a thing that I wanna warm council up. For our next meeting on the twenty-fifth, I'd like to perhaps figure out a way that we can get these appraised and offer them for sale, advertise them for sale. These are just some properties that have come to our, our possession over the last few years. With that, let's turn this on and continue on with our, our meeting here. Lois, would you mind reading some motions here for us, for me?
Good evening, everyone. Motion to correct property previous offer by the City of Maneson to the City of Maneson Redevelopment Authority as property number two zero dash zero two dash twelve dash zero dash zero six zero, which should be properly listed as property number twenty dash zero two dash twelve dash zero dash zero five nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any questions?
Where's it at? I mean, Delaware Avenue.
Is that the Seven-Eleven Delaware one?
It was Seven-Eleven Delaware. Okay, it's hard to go, twenty-two, fourteen...
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like you're playing a quarterback.
Exactly.
They mentioned that.
And really, they were really well-described in the last meeting. There was just a typo on the, on the property number, and that, that's, that's the reason why this motion was there. We have a motion and a second, could you call the roll, please?
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Esther?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilor Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moeller?
Yes.
Motion to approve payment requisition number 17 in the amount of $610,097.8 for the Phase 3 work performed during the month of March 2024 for the sewer rehabilitation project Phase 3. The requisition and payment certificate allocates item number 1 and number 2 payments to WEC Engineering in amounts of number 1 of $19,420.66 and number 2 for $43,811.72. And item number 3 to Inside Pipe Contracting LLC in amount of $83,563.20. And number 4 to MCSP Inc. in amount of $464,811.72.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on this? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve repository sale of 20-02-03-0-108 349 Scooter Maker to Joshua Lindsay for $500.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any questions? Just to make sure everybody understands, these are repository properties sold by the county. They asked the school, the city and the county to be aware of these sales before they're finalized. Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve repository sale of 20-02-10-0-470 1,006 Dunlap Street to Joseph Pager for $1,242.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to name RVE as a city engineer serving from May 2024 to December 31st, 2024.
Is there a second?
Mayor, I'm going to motion for that to be tabled until I get some definitive answers of what actually is going on today with this meeting. I just feel that, you know, currently, if we're going to move on from another engineer, I want to know how much do we owe currently to this engineer and where we all stand as a person. I love the idea of individually.
Let's talk about this for just a second. What does it mean to be, if you notice, the very next one is to name WEC as a special engineer responsible for DEP-defined sewer project Phase 3 pursuant to the effective contract in place between the city and WEC. That is all the sewer work that's done. What we're left with is the CDBG projects that we're talking about. We're talking about Third Street. We're talking about possibly having their structural engineers look at the parking garage. We're talking about the demolition of houses that are funded through CDBG. It does not have anything to do with what WEC's spending all their time with.
As I told Tony, we have enough information on Third Street for the 10% of the house. And you know that. As far as, as far as the garage goes. The city's insurance company came in and said either.
The city's insurance company came in and said either demolish it or repair it. They chose to close it. They did neither of those things. Exactly. No, they did not, the insurance company never came in and said that until it was condemned. Now, let's back up and talk about that for just a second. It turns out that a former mayor really wanted to demolish that garage for reasons I'm not sure I fully understand. And he went to you to get it condemned because he had somebody that he thought could demolish that property at a price that he could afford. So I don't know what kind of, I just know that it was condemned. I would like to reevaluate that. Is the top half of that parking garage still solid enough to allow parking on it? It may or it may not, but the insurance company is not willing to risk, like, to write the policy. If they write, if something happens. If the engineer, structural engineer says it's safe, the insurance company will insure it. That's not the issue. The issue is, is it safe to do that? Do we need to get a structural engineer to look at that parking garage so that it can be, that part of it opened up again? I have plans for it, existing plans. I'm sure it's not gotten better. So. I'm not a structural engineer. He went in and weighed the whole thing and they load rated. But. Excuse me? No, it was Lou. I had a price to, he had a price to demolish it for 25,000 bucks. No, he had a price for 50,000. He was trying to get his split to 20, with 25,000.
I think we're getting a little pulled ahead on this topic though, Mayor. I think we need to go ahead.
Let's go back to, back to what we're, what we're talking about here. So there was a motion to table the RVA, RVE. Is there a second to that?
I second it.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
No.
Motion to name WEC as a special engineer responsible for DEP-defined sewer project Phase 3 pursuant to the effective contract in place between the City of Manassas and WEC.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve $157,850.44 Phase 4 Change Order 1 with Penn Vest to close out Reynolds Brothers Construction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to contribute up to $7,000 in cooperation with Reynolds Brothers Construction from line usage to cover the cost of correcting the damage caused by Phase 4 construction activities at Reed Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
So, so Tony, is that where the golly there? Okay, great. That's good news. Yeah, that's good news.
There's a second. Call the roll, please.
The 7,000, is that coming out of line usage?
That would be my suggestion, yes.
Okay, I just want to publicly say that it's gonna come out of line usage.
Is there any other questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to extend the contingent offered of employment to Linda Matthews as city clerk of the City of Manassas to be accepted on or about April 15, 2024. The offer is contingent on applicant's acceptance and passing of background screening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Tony, Director of Accounts and Finance.
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund in the amount of $28,848.81. All invoices are attached to this agenda's attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the rec fund account in the amount of $744.89. All invoices are attached to this agenda's attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the parks fund in the amount of $3,396.2. All invoices are attached to this agenda, attached to this agenda's attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the grant fund in the amount of $525. All invoices are attached to this agenda as attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay the following invoices from the liquid fuels fund in the amount of $13,651.10. All invoices are attached to this agenda's attachment E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to approve the transfer of $78,445.38 from the general fund to the payroll account to cover payroll expenses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to transfer $2,200 from the general account to the healthcare account.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
And these are the balances in the accounts as of today. The general fund has $438,791.49. Grant fund has $55,466.69. Payroll has $31,837.69. Healthcare has $5,439.68. American Rescue Fund has $155,693.19. Refuge account has $381,352.87. Fire Escrow has $21,470. Debt service fund has $837,65.47. Parks fund has $27,019.12. Rec fund has $6,518.31. Line usage has $876,12.73. Those don't get reported. And the tax anticipation note is still $280,355.73. Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. Lois, would you like to give a sure report, please?
If I may, Mayor, I'd like to defer giving the Streets and Public Improvement Report for this month and in March 31st until our next meeting on the 25th, please.
Okay. John, do you have a report for us?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Ministry of Staff, Citizens of Manassas, and Rail Officers. Here is actually a report that I'm gonna give at, I missed from the last previous meeting. It's the Armond Valley Emergency Medical Service Report for March. Emergency calls, 99. Fire standbys, 99. Public services, none. Police details, zero. Others, 57. Year to, for a total incident of 165. Year-to-date, 519. I apologize, I was gonna give that to last week. I also want to iterate that there is going to be an open house at this fire station, number one, May 4th from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. I know it's the same day as the city's cleanup. There is only an hour overlap. So I please welcome the citizens to come down and to look to see what the station number one has to offer. Other than that, Mayor, I yield the floor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Karen, do you have anything you'd like to present?
Well, I don't have an official report, but I just wanted to make you aware that because the Salvation Army can't provide lunches this year, I've been asking local businesses if they could contribute cash or products or anything. And I asked Amy, how do I handle these donations? And she said that if someone gives cash donation or a check, it'll go into the general account with the little line item of, for the cleanup. And what I would like to do is, once I know how many people will be there, go out and get what I need and then provide receipts for her to be reimbursed. Does that make sense? Or do you have a better way of handling things?
You can do it that way, but you're still gonna have to do a PO. There still needs to be a requisition trail.
Okay.
Wasn't there a donation account opened up?
There is a, there is. It just needs to be tagged for this, this thing, but still. Your requisition.
You can do one, just one total, Karen. You know, whatever your total, final total is.
So after I've purchased these items, then I can do a PO?
I don't want you doing 20, 30, or 40.
Well, no, there's not gonna be that many. And I also wanted to mention, you may or may not know that I've been on the Shade Tree Commission for several years. I'm not officially on that commission anymore, but I'm the liaison to it. And we knew coming into this year that a grant would be available to take down some of the trees in City Park and Sixth Street Park. So over the Easter break, Mark Belora and Mike worked very hard to get that grant in on time. This is a grant that does not require a match, which I think is amazing because we don't have money. So they applied for, through the DCNR and for $212,000. And what that would include will be the tree removal. And if any of you go to City Park, you'll notice that those trees have a paint slash across them. And I think last year, we had about 65 trees that needed to come down. And also, some of the trees in Sixth Street Park will come out. They'll be replaced. And that would also include if we needed more soil for the trees or mulch and things like that. And we will know by July 1st whether or not we get the grant. And the money cannot be spent till 2025, which seems like a far-off date, but time goes. So it'll be here before we know it. So I think that's really exciting for the City of Manassas that we're eligible for this grant and we'll be able to take some of these trees down before they actually fall down. So I just wanted everybody to know that.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Excellent.
You're very welcome.
Anything else? At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment directed to myself on any items related to the business, ordinances, statutes, resolutions, or daily work product and the attention of the City of Manassas.
Okay, Mayor. We have to really think how you council members are voted by the taxpayers to represent what's best for them. And just meeting twice a month at the meeting, you possibly cannot handle like the situation that we just had previously with a dispute over figures and all that. So you people gotta have like representation for every group and every project or every issue that you're working on. And you're not doing that.
What's your suggestion?
My suggestion is you better start getting council members to meet more than just two meetings. And then you have to have some sort of a platform to address all these overlapping expenses. Now, I don't know if you guys know this or not. Things are not gonna go back to normal. We're gonna keep proceeding higher and higher debt. Now, then we got all these institutions, they want their money. And then you guys got no money coming in. Now, you're not focusing trying to get new industry, new employment, new anything in here. So you guys gotta start regrouping and have some sort of a, an aggressive policy So you guys got to start regrouping and have some sort of a, an aggressive policy of how you're going to handle all these expenses coming down the road. Now, you spend a lot of time and all you people get paid, what, the work, what, Monday through Friday? Is that what you're getting paid for?
I get paid four thousand, eight hundred dollars per year.
I'm talking about time.
Per year.
Is it to go from Monday to Friday?
No.
What is it?
It's to attend these meetings.
Okay, other than that, I mean, everybody else, I mean, I know you, you put more time in about the other people. What are they doing?
I get paid somewhere in the neighborhood of less than a dollar an hour for the time I put in.
Yeah, I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about your group. Your group as a responsible council member to the people who voted you in.
There is not one person up here that I believe is not totally one-hundred percent dedicated to the serving of the people of Manassas.
Okay, now, I'm glad you brought that up. How many people got together last Friday? You guys did not have a meeting down here. You opened up the library to have a private meeting on your time as a taxpayer, working for the city, and you spending all your time spreading your wheels to incorporate a group called the Nehemiah Group, which does not represent the citizens of this coun, of the city. And how many of the council members here were aware that? That you went with nine other people, including Cosner, you guys went down there on your time, not devoted to Manassas people, but to activate a nonprofit denominational group that has nothing to do with city taxpayers?
That was on the one hour that I had, that I was on the city payroll.
None of the other council members know?
They weren't, there, there was.
Does the library belong to us?
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, once you do work for other people, they're working for other concerns, okay? The taxpayers getting screwed here left and right. These people are going to be overwhelmed with all these institutional people who want their money. And they're not capable of negotiating.
I would also like to point out, for the first time in twenty-five years or better, this council has ended the year on a positive note. You can't say that we're not meeting our obligations.
What do you mean positive note? What's positive note? Wait a minute, you guys haven't fixed one pothole. One pothole you haven't fixed yet.
We've got a streets department that's fixing.
What are they doing? It's like Mickey Mouse. Every road you go, your car hits a pothole.
Today, they fixed two major.
Oh, two. You know how many you got? Over five hundred potholes in this town.
Yeah.
Now, going back to your responsibilities, it isn't trying to negotiate and try to bring about another institution, non, non-taxpaying institution.
Show me where it says I can't do that.
Not on our time. Do it on a Saturday or Sunday. They're not doing the, your time, Monday through Friday.
There you go. So it didn't accomplish anything anyway?
No, you're wasting time and you also employed D'Alfonso here to write up the articles of incorporation.
Did not happen that way.
No?
No.
Then who's writing them up? Who's writing them up?
Mike is.
What do you mean your kids? You know, this thing's going over and over. The thing is, you guys got no responsibility to try to initiate another nonprofit group that is not denominational of Manassas taxpayers.
Okay, I understand. Anything else?
Yeah, I want to know, you got the library board off not to pay their insurance. So they paid January fourth, April fourth came, you guys did not pay the insurance on that building. When, when did you pay it?
As part of the insurance policy for the city.
So they don't have a separate?
No, it's part of the city policy.
Okay, do you have like a rider?
Yes.
Can you prove it?
Yes.
Can you show? When, when can you show it? That you added the library?
E.H.D. can provide that tomorrow morning.
Who's that?
The provider, the provider can provide that in the morning.
And do you know how much it was?
I, I, off the top of my head, I don't know.
So we don't know any coverage?
You have cover, you have coverage, absolutely. It's covered.
Yes, it's covered.
You don't have, the library doesn't pay for it anymore. We do. It's our building. We pay for it.
Well, they didn't get anything, as of yesterday, notified that they're being covered. So what's that about?
If they paid their policy, they will see that it's been decreased and they're covered that way.
They're not paying the policy. You tell them not to pay policy.
The building is paid by, for the city. They still have a policy for the contents.
But you didn't provide them with any piece of paper that the building's been taken care of.
All they got to do is come down here, we can get it for them.
So everybody has to come down?
I'll get it to him tomorrow if he, while he's not in.
No, tomorrow they're close.
At the latest.
Okay, well, those are the.
They're covered, yes.
All right. I, I just hope you guys get together and try to be more intelligent and be a pro instead of a anti-force of arguing people.
Thank you. My name is Pina, Forty-Five Moon Traver. Can you guys hear me?
Use, use the mic.
Okay. My name's Pina, I'm Forty-Five Moon Traver Drive, Manassas, one five oh six two. I wanted to ask you a question from last month, from last week, if you could give me an answer. Did you get a hold of K-2 on that electrical and plumbing work that those people are doing in some of those houses, they're not being inspected?
They were absolutely inspected. Absolutely, they were inspected.
Is that what they say? I like to be.
No, first off, the electric company will not turn on the power unless they show all the inspection. They were fully inspected.
Inspected for what? Before they cover it up?
Before they covered it up. While the walls are open, they have to go through an electrical inspection, yes.
And plumbing?
And plumbing, yes.
That's not what they told.
Well, I'm sorry, that that's what has to happen, and that's what did happen.
And do they collect, do they pay taxes for what the employee, employer pays the employee, the guy from New York?
I believe they do, yes.
How, how you believe? I mean, do they?
Well, because that's what the, the laws say.
Do you have a way to show that?
No, I do not. You have a way to say that they're not.
You think they do?
If you believe that they're not, contact the IRS, because IRS will give you ten percent of whatever you, you can expose.
I was never a stool pigeon.
Well, there you go.
If I have something to tell you, I'll tell you.
There you go.
Okay? Because stool pigeons are people like you.
But you're, you're trying to sit there and accuse them of something.
I got one more question. Why did Mike resign from the Redevelopment Authority? He said you weren't telling him the truth.
Who?
That's what he said. Mike.
Mike.
He said, he knows who he is.
Yeah, Mike, I forget his name. You know, I really don't know. I had a conversation with Mike after the fact.
He made it very clear that you know, and I understood what he said.
Well, he, he had some bad assumptions, and I did talk to him after he left, and I suggested that he, he reassess his, his resignation.
After you guys voted to accept his resignation?
I didn't vote. I don't vote on that.
I know, but you, you play a part in there, okay?
I must say as.
But I didn't know that you were in the Redevelopment Authority at one point. But that is the worst meeting that you could possibly ever go to, because they don't have an agenda, they don't allow you to talk, and now the guy who's now, the guy who's in charge, the preacher, whatever the hell his name is, he worked in the White House, he said, I don't know, maybe he was a plumber there. But nevertheless, okay, all I can tell you is, what they're doing is definitely not with the law. I don't care what the attorney said. Okay? Because I got attorneys that'll tell you the same damn thing. We'll approach that, we might take a month and a half or two, but we will get to them. Now, one other question that I have, and I wanted to ask a question to the engineers that were here, it'd be a fair question. And you said that you, you could ask it.
Well, I didn't say that. You can, you can address the question to me, and if I feel appropriate, I will allow them to talk.
I understood him saying very clearly that they don't, they don't find grants. They help people obtain grants, how to, you know, they give their opinion on what they need. Am I correct, or? What is it?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go, go ahead. Go ahead and address the question if you feel appropriate.
Go ahead.
There's another mic here, too.
Sir, what I had said is that every month, we, we submit a list of grants to our clients, and we will talk to those clients and say, here's ones that you maybe have available. Here's ones that you should go after. And it gives you an idea of what's out there, you know, whether it be an Appalachian Regional Council Grant, whether it be a Pennsylvania Environmental Fund Grant. There's tons of them, and we have a grant writer in our office who submits those to all of the people in our firm, who then we can go back and take them to our clients and say, you may be eligible. Then do we, will we write the grants? Some of them we do, some we have. If you have a city that writes them, the city will write them. We will help with the technical expertise that's needed. So that's what I said.
That's what I thought he said, that he would help you, but they will not go it themselves after, even though he said that.
So if you come up with a, a grant that you suggest that you think might fit us, we can still pay you to write that grant, as I understand.
Absolutely, yes.
Well, you could pay anybody to write the grant.
Well, but that's the point.
We will go after the grant and, and we'll get it.
But you could pay anybody to write the grant. You could ask them to write, write you a grant, and they'll pay, you'll pay them, they'll do it. Simple. So what you said, but let me ask you one more question.
I don't know how to answer that, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Well, let me ask you one more question. Have you ever run into, you know, rocks on a job and you had to write an extra on it?
Have I ever run into rocks on a, a job?
On a job that you did?
Yes, in fact, and right now, we're in the middle of doing, in Kennedy Township in Allegheny County, we're in the middle of replacing a landslide, which we're doing as part of a grant that we were able to help secure. Kennedy Township, we write the grants ourselves. So we were able to get a grant for that, where they had a landslide that was going in between two towns and was also one of the bus routes for the school. So during that landslide, one of the things, when we did our geotechnical, which is what you would do on a project that you had concerns about, any of the soils or anything there, when we did our geotechnical, we noticed that the one area, we weren't going to be able to put in our retaining wall because of the rocks and that, so we had to look at a different way of doing it in that area.
So the cost does change, right?
No, we did it beforehand, as, as part of our.
You mean, so in other words, you never went into where you had to, actually, we put in there a cost, because you went into some rocks?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
Okay, you, you bid a job, and you don't think there's any rocks in there. I, I, let me, let me give you my background. I've dealt with many engineers like you, okay? And I run a company of three hundred and eighty people, and we did dirt work. So when we bid a job, there's always a line there that says if we run into some, you know, stones or anything, it's an extra cost. And that's normal with the language set. You're telling me that you don't have that?
Again, I'm not understanding your question. I will tell you, though, what we will do on a project, if we do think that there's going to be different soils, whether it be rocks, whether it be different types, red beds, whatever it would be, if we have a concern about that, we would look at doing a geotechnical boring in that area to determine what is going to be there. One of the things we did do in River Valley, for instance, the proposal that I gave to council, when we were doing the sanitary sewer replacement, there was an area that had some rocks. So they had to go through that area, but they did not charge extra on it, because we had said, here are the geotechnicals that we had done, we showed that there's a possibility of it in there. So, no, they did not charge extra.
Let me ask you the question a little bit different. If you run into a project that requires additional time, material, or something else be done, do you go out and do that additional project right then? Or what, what is your first thing that happens when you, you come to that?
Well, I want to keep giving examples.
Well, no, just to answer the question.
So something like that, yes. The first thing that we do is if we're running into issues, we have to talk to the people who are going to pay.
You come with a change order, a request for a change order?
We come to do that.
Inform us what's going on.
I'll give an example of one that happened today. We talked, just talked about the landslide that we're doing on Aiken Road in Kennedy Township. About five hundred feet up the road from where we're doing the landslide, the contractor came back and said, hey, there's guide rail there that's only about a foot high. While I'm out here, I could replace that guide rail. Okay, good. You know, gave us a decent price. At that point, we went to the, to the man, borough manager and said, you know, Greg, this is, here's the price we got, this is a very good price, it's really not part of this project, but it'd probably be something you want to look at doing. He said, I'll let you know. That's exactly how we would handle that.
So you'll do it for free?
No, he basically said he informs council, council will make a decision whether they want to go forward or not.
We have a geotechnical right out of one thirty-six.
Come on, we've, we've, we've beat this to death.
Do all the drilling before?
We've beat this to death, Pino. You got anything else you want to talk about?
Yeah, just want to finish the question. He said the geotechnical.
You've asked a question several times.
We have one right here on one thirty-six. Normally, what they do is come up and drill, take the, a sample out, and make sure that the sample is what they think it is, and then they tell you what it's going to run you, what it's going to cost you. That's the technical part of it.
That's what we expect to see happen.
Is for a hundred and some years, they're doing it for free evidently, right?
I, I don't understand why, how we're doing it for free.
Well, that's the reason why. I don't think that they should be doing it for free either. That's my whole point.
Okay, hey, okay, we're going to, we're going to bring this to the end. You've asked a question several times, it was answered. If you don't understand what's going on here, you can come talk to me.
He doesn't give you a straight answer.
The, the, the bottom line is that we need to be know of these things before the money is spent, and that's the, the end result of that.
I, I think what you're doing is disservice to the people in Manassas.
No disservice has been done. He is.
And these people are coming from New Jersey with a bag over your eyeballs and telling you they're doing it for nothing, a hundred and some years.
They didn't say they were doing it for nothing. They said they would keep us involved.
That is not telling you the truth. They're not telling you.
All right, that's enough, that's enough. Sit down. Anybody else?
Don't tell me to sit down.
I'm going to tell you to sit down.
Then I tell you stay and sit down.
Okay, I'm directing my question to you, Mayor, and this is the article that was in a paper that shows those two houses.
Yes.
That the city sold to the Redevelopment Authority. And I showed that to you last week.
And, and the point being is, the point being is, he looked it up, this is in error. That is not our problem.
He didn't say that. He didn't say he corrected it.
It's exactly what he said.
He said he sold it for a dollar.
He said it for, sold it for a dollar. It says, it says twenty-one thousand dollars here.
How am I supposed to fix this? How am I supposed to fix this paper?
Where, call the, call the editor and ask him how they got those numbers.
I'm going to ask you to fix it. All I'm saying is, that's what was recorded.
It's, no, it's not what was recorded.
The courthouse could sign that.
I went to the recorders of these website. You could look at this stuff on the internet.
Well, how can you, when you didn't have an address for Elm Street?
I wrote the deed in twenty-twenty-two for the city to transfer it to the Redevelopment Authority.
Without an address?
No, with an address.
There's no address on there.
That's beside the point.
It has a parcel ID.
But usually, there's an address.
This property does not have an address. It's known as Eighteen Elm Street.
Eighteen Elm Street, okay.
Yeah. It was transferred to the Redevelopment Authority. They filed the deed April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, what about the motherland one?
Same date, April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, and they then transferred it to, I believe, a neighboring property under.
Okay, and how much did they sell that for?
I believe it was five hundred dollars.
Well, it says here, four thousand.
So call, call up the newspaper and ask, say their, their research is wrong.
It could be something they read on the, the statement of value where you have to fill out and.
Well, I don't have a problem with it as long as it's corrective, but this is what we, the public, is seeing.
I would say find a different source.
Control whatever paper that is. I'm telling you, the city hopefully received their two dollars for these two properties. I don't know that, but I can't.
Do they have proof that they sold it for a dollar, or do I have to act the Redevelopment Authority?
Either way.
The deed says the city conveys these properties. Both deeds say for one dollar.
Wouldn't the Redevelopment Authority have copies of what they sold?
They, they're recorded, the deeds are recorded.
Okay, so in other words, for me to find out if what you're saying is accurate, I got to go to Green.
Do you think I'm sitting here lying to you? Like, why would I lie about this?
Well, I'm saying.
You can do this online, you can look it up.
I'm not, I did not.
But you're asking, but why would I sit here and not tell you the truth about what was filed at the recorder of deeds?
Because I'm looking at it in black and white.
From a newspaper, they could have made a mistake.
Oh, okay, I granted that, but what I asked you was, wouldn't the Redevelopment have proof that they sold it?
They would probably have copies of the deed that they did, yes.
Correct, that's what I want to know. Okay, then I have one other question. Last week, or last two weeks, you gave people amnesty that didn't pay their trash fee.
No, that hasn't started yet.
Now, my question earlier, you said that you didn't know how you were going to do the contract, because you didn't know how many houses connected to the trash pickup. But my question is, how can you say that and give amnesty to people that don't pay their trash fee? So you would have to know a number of how many households are going to get this amnesty, and how much is it going to cost the city? And I, why can't they pay it, just like everybody else pays it?
Most likely, most likely, most of these are going to come back as uncollectible, because the people have died, gone away, or whatever the case may be. What I'm trying to do is figure out how many of these we can collect something from.
So what about the people who paid their trash bill?
Thank you very much.
What are you going to do for them?
Thank you very much, I pay my trash bill, I, I understand it well.
Why don't you give us a break?
We got to pay our garbage carrier.
Well, so does everybody else that lives in Manassas that has trash.
What we're talking about is, that's right, that's right.
So, but why are you giving certain households amnesty?
It is a temporary amnesty that if they come through, come forward between May 1st or June 1st.
It doesn't matter whether it's temporary or not, it's still costing the city money.
Yeah, I believe this program starts June 1st and runs through the end of November, I do believe.
All right, and who's going to keep track of how many houses you give the amnesty? Because I want to know.
Portnoy has all these records, Portnoy has this, this information. What we're going to do is give people a chance to get out from underneath Portnoy's collection.
Why? It's their fault that Portnoy got it in the first place. I had to suck it up, I got stuck in there about four years ago.
Thank you very much.
And I had to suck it up.
Thank you very much.
So why can't they suck it up and pay their own trash fee?
They haven't in many years.
Well, all I, all I want to know is how many houses and how much we lost by giving these households amnesty.
The city will lose nothing, the city will collect the full principal.
Well, you get a part from Portnoy anyway.
Well, we get only the principal from Portnoy.
You get more than that from Portnoy.
No, they get the rest of it, and what we're doing is we're cutting their process.
But you could take a $200 trash fee, or a $400 trash fee, Portnoy gets it, and it becomes $900.
So what will happen is, what will happen is, Portnoy will get 500, and we get 400. We get the principal, that's all we get from Portnoy is the principal.
Okay, I just want to.
What we're talking about doing is cutting these.
Okay, so Tony's here, I just want Tony to keep track of how many houses get this amnesty and how much money is involved.
This is something that will come from Portnoy.
I'm not keeping track, that's Portnoy's job, Portnoy's job, not mine.
But doesn't the money come into the city? Or should I ask?
It goes to the treasurer.
Or should I ask the treasurer?
You can report every month on what Portnoy sends us. Yeah, he reports it every month.
Okay, is Portnoy going to give you a list of how many houses got this amnesty?
Will you get that in? As of now, no.
Well, it starts to first.
Last year, we received from Portnoy, it's for the 2023 budget, we received from Portnoy That includes penalties and interest. That's what we, that's the reports we get, and I report that every month on the distribution. In fact, I think I gave you a copy of this.
I got it.
This report.
I got it.
I think Portnoy would be willing to share a monthly report of how this amnesty program is working or not working.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor, I have one more question. I don't know if I should direct it to you or to Karen.
Well, she's directed me, and I can turn it over to Karen.
Six Street Park, is that the park off of McKee that goes down to Scootamaker?
Six Street Park is off Six Street.
So those trees, are you going to fix the wall back there?
Possible.
Possible, but the grant, I think, is tree removal and tree replacement.
Right.
I, I know what you're talking about, though, we had a tour of that, and I saw the wall you're, you're talking about.
Well, the wall is falling down. Okay, and the other part of it, Mayor, is, what part of 12th Street under this Phase 4 are they doing? Because I didn't think there was any houses on 12th Street, but I may be mistaken.
It's the intersection of 12th and, I forget the name of the street there, but on the, in the middle of that intersection.
12th and what?
I don't, I don't remember the name of the street. Now, let me, let me tell you what actually happened there. This was, what they did was they uncovered a manhole. The manhole had been previously paved over, and in the process of doing Phase 3, not Phase 4, Phase 3, they're in the process of figuring out where this manhole is. So they came in, they figured out where it is, they excavated around it and exposed the manhole. When they excavated around it to expose the manhole, they just filled it with gravel. Now, you take a car and you drive through it, it kicks the gravel out, next thing you know is you got a rut in the gravel, and you're, you're destroying tires and cars. That's what I have an issue with. And they fixed that today, that's what our, our, our Public Works did today. Okay. Anyway, they've been fixed today. And I'm not putting anything against Mike Tilly, because he, he's been trying to get that fixed for a couple of weeks, because I've been on him for a couple of weeks. They left town and left us high and dry, and I had no other choice but to call our